Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, December 1st, 2014 at 6:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Cool.
Here.
Bollig.
Here.
Udrow.
Here.
Grenier.
Here.
Brett Howard.
Staton.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is public appearances, of which there are none. Item four is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the general operating fund in the amount of $404,352.35.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I've got two. And I don't know, Mike, if you can be able to answer this or not.
Okay.
But there's a line item in there to de-stripe the K-9 squad. So I'm starting to lose track of what we're doing with the K-9 squad because it seemed like the last time we met, we were putting radios in there and updating the squad. Now it seems like we're taking it out of service.
So they had to take the K-9 probably on the outside of the vehicle off that vehicle. I'm assuming that's what that is. Because that one vehicle's not going to be the K-9 anymore vehicle.
Oh.
So the one that had been, they had to take the striping off.
Got it. So we're still going to have a K-9 vehicle.
Oh, absolutely.
We're just transitioning from an old vehicle to a new vehicle.
Exactly.
Got it. And my second question was, union dues of 407.50, the general ledger 9901, what is that?
Oh, that's the police department. They're the only union that we have anymore, and that's the dues that our police officers pay.
It's a payroll deduction.
Yeah.
So it just kind of passes through?
We take it out of their checks, and then we pay the police union.
Pay, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
So Act 10 now prohibits that only for police now?
Uh-uh.
Mr. Bollig.
Yes, thank you. Invoice number 109254 to Bergamot, is that the new subdivision? Is that to Rookert-Milkey? Is that the engineering for the new phase, I should say?
Let's see, Jerry, where are you here?
109254.
Page three, about the middle.
Yes.
Yep.
Engineering, okay.
Yep.
And then I guess this would be for Mark on the water tower cleaning coat for the repair of the Lincoln Road Tower. Was that tower down, or was that?
No, we needed to do some maintenance on the outside of it.
Okay.
They didn't get it done yet, but partially done. Probably with the cold weather finishing spring now.
Was it just like scraping and painting or something?
We had it sandblasted, pressure washed and cleaned, and then we're going to have some spot repairs done on the paint, and then they will in the spring, we'll have to drain it so they can do their annual inspection, five-year inspection.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we have motion second to approve vouchers in the amount of $404,352.35. Roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Udrow? Yes.
Thank you. That passes six oh. Item five is community input. There is no one here to address the board tonight. We'll go on to item six, proclamations and announcements. A, board comments. Seeing none, we'll go to B.
Well, we've got the Christmas tree lighting on Friday. Hopefully everybody can turn out for that.
Yeah, 6:30.
6:30.
Over on the corner.
Yep, and I think hot chocolate and refreshments at BMO.
Yeah, that's always fun. Anything else we can think of? Okay. Staff comments?
Quiet over here, too.
Okay. Item seven, communication and miscellaneous business discussion possible. Action regarding license agreement for use of Jefferson Street Dumpster Corral for 2015. There's a note, the 2015 agreement will be available at the board meeting, which we have, and all four licensees want to renew for 2015. So we need a motion to bring that before us, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from staff?
The only really two major changes is that we change masons to field properties in the document. And if you look on page, I mean, we just made, in the first page on 1B, we made it very clear that the term of this license agreement is from January 1st to December. Because the first one, we actually started in February, so we made sure that it was clear. It's now is for the entire year.
Okay.
And then Matt and I, we just had some, there was some challenging processing this last year. We tried to have one person collect all the money and then bring it over. Well, that didn't work out. So what we, all we did was we just said each licensee will pay us $130. They'll come over, give us that payment. This is, I'm looking on page 200 fees, and then they'll sign the agreement versus asking someone to collect the money. And that did not work out last year, so this is, so it's the same amount of money that we charged for 2014.
Okay.
I have a question. Was that a problem? Did everybody pay on time?
Oh, yeah. It was just that we were trying to have one person just collect all the money and bring, and that, they all came over individually, so we thought let's just make the agreement show that.
My concern was, you know, that they as a group make payment to the village.
Yeah.
We're going to now let them pay individually, so it'll only be a problem if somebody doesn't come in and pay.
Right.
Three of them have paid, one hasn't. Then we'll be chasing whoever that is.
I don't think that's going to be a problem. I mean, Kevin Ace wanted to pay already last week, so I just.
It's only $130.
Yeah, I mean, if it's an issue, I'll bring it back to the board, but I don't anticipate it. They paid this year, I don't know why they wouldn't pay it for 2015. Yeah.
So the users, were they happy with the facility that we provided them?
I, all I did was ask them if they wanted to renew, and they.
We'll assume they are.
Yep.
Okay.
And as I say, the rest of the agreement is exactly the same as far as maintaining it and, you know, having one container in there for garbage, one for recycling, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, we have a motion and second to approve the license agreement for the use of the Jefferson Street Dumpster Corral for 2015. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, consider approval of separation agreement with the village employee, which is Nicole Stropich from the police department. So we need a motion to bring that before us, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments over here? Anything for staff?
No.
We spent time on this before.
We did, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion second to approve the separation agreement with Nicole Stropich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Listening.
Item C, scheduling special public works and utility committee meeting, December 15th at 5:15 PM to review the draft water system master plan update. And that is, the committee is Chair Aguiar, Jeff Udrow, and Doug Brett Howard. So, does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Item D, discussion possible action, resignation of Police Secretary to Ellen McCurdy and authorizing placement add to fill the position. She has taken a full-time position with another employer, so.
Yes.
We would need a motion second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Anything from staff? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, discussion possible action regarding authorizing the placement of notice for pump house improvements and authorizing village administrator to approve individual projects for pump house.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Comments?
Because this is under $25,000, we can do the class one notice per the village attorney. And just to make things easier, I'm asking the board to authorize me to approve the individual contracts that Randy McCurdy does bring into the village.
Should we make that part of the motion?
I'm asking it to be part of the motion, please.
Okay.
Yep.
I did have a question about the budget. The way that it's written was a little bit confusing to me because there's two columns, a non-donated cost and a donated cost estimate. And just to be clear, what portion of the funds that are being used to renovate the pump house are not donated in some way, shape, or form, be it a grant or private fundraising by Randy versus public funds? That's what I think of when I think of non-donated, I think of public funds. How would you define non-donated?
So for example, if you look at the doors, the two doors, the doors actually, he's saying the doors cost $1,500, but the contractor's only charging $1,000 for the doors and giving, and donating the $500 or doing in-kind service. And so that, the non-donated cost is what the village is going to have to pay for to get the pump house renovated, either, you know, through the grants that Randy has received and through donations.
So what I'm hearing you say is that throughout the entire budget, the non-donated cost is what the cost would be, however, the donated cost estimate takes into consideration gifts and kind.
If you, if he was not getting any of this stuff donated, Jeff, he'd be paying almost $50,000 to do all that work over there. He's only going to pay $24,720 as an estimate right now. The rest that's all being donated, the contractors, you know, basically doing, you know, writing some of that work off.
So none of the monies, or can you tell me what portion of the monies that are being used to renovate the pump house are actually public funds, tax dollars?
The only money that was in, well, I would say probably, before this all started, there was about $3,000 sitting in preserve the water tower fund. I think some of those, some of that were donations. I'm not going to say that entirely $3,000 was maybe, it could have been a couple dollars of tax, but mainly it's all been donated or through grants. Very, very little tax dollars are being put on this, or into this.
From Randy's efforts.
Absolutely, yep. Yep.
So let me just ask about that. So even some of those non-donated cost items, the actual cash that would be paid to the supplier or the contractor, some of those dollars that will be paid are actually dollars that were raised for the project.
So the all, anything under that, he's not getting donated, is going to be paid through, we've gotten two grants for it, and then he's collected donations.
Grants and donations.
Right. Anything on the donation is basically, you've got to take the non and the donated, that's the total price, for example, of the tuck planning. The contractor decided only to charge the village $3,230 for doing the work, but actually, in reality, the project costs over $5,000 through the tuck planning. But he, but the contractor didn't charge us the total amount.
But even the cost that we're going to pay the contractor is largely being covered by either grants or?
It's.
Dollars that have been raised through.
Absolutely. Like I said, I don't want to say for sure because when I got here, there was about $3,000, well, maybe Mark knows, there was about $3,000 in that fund for years. I don't know how that original money got in there.
Most of that was donated.
Okay, so I would probably say 100% of this is all coming through donations or grants.
Randy has done an amazing job. We thank him for that. And when I look at the list of things being done, I am astounded that that much can be done this soon. I thought it would take years if ever we could get this done. So we'll turn him loose on the water tower next.
We have some other projects for him. I won't scare him, I don't want to scare him away.
Yeah, he's just done a great job. Any further question or comments other than the thanks from the board to Randy? Okay, so we have the.
I'll tell him that, actually.
What's that?
I'll tell him that, I'll pass it on.
Okay, good. We have a motion second to authorize the placement of notice for pump house improvements and authorizing village administrator to approve individual projects for the pump house. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, discussion possible action, approval of the facility request form for People's United Methodist Church for us to use their church for two election 2015. The amount is $300.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. That's working out fine, right, Peggy? Yeah, seems to, it's been a good site for us. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm going to abstain, I go to church there, so, okay, I'll just stay out of it. Item eight, reported committees, there are none. Item nine, minutes not requiring action, there are minutes in our packet and online from the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission from the October 2nd, 2014 meeting. Item 10, no unfinished business. Item 11, no new business, no future agenda. Items under 12. Item 13, the board will adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, 1C and F, considering extended medical leave for a village employee in pursuit of Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, 1E to consider purchasing property.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cool.
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Carpenter? Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to closed session, we'll stay right here. Go next door?
Yes, I think it'd be easier to do it across the hall.
Okay, we'll go next door. We will adjourn from closed session, not be coming back on TV.
Steve was inspired today.
Let's, yeah.[1217.23] Okay, we'll go to closed session. We'll stay right here. Go next door.
Yes, I think it'd be easier to do it across the hall.
Okay, we'll go next door. We will adjourn from closed session, not be coming back on TV.
Steve was inspired today.